Thank you for doing this, Jennifer.
Thank you for doing this. It's a pleasure to be here and I think it's so important that people get to hear directly from the candidates as opposed to just what they hear out in the bout.
Yeah, it's an interesting difference in format than your typical forum.
Yes.
And I just think people like to see it on this level, some people do. But I always want to start with the bio. I feel like, you know, everything centers on where you grew up, how you found Talbot County, or maybe you were born here, but all of these things contribute to your civic makeup. So I'd be interested in your background.
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't born here. I wish I had been. I was actually born in Washington DC, grew up in Montgomery County in Kensington. I went to high school in Washington DC at Sidwell Friends. I then went on to the University of Maryland.
That's right.
I worked for a while. I went to law school at night. I sold votes by day, so I was a yacht broker.
That's right.
At that point, I had my 100-ton captain's license. I've been told I'm an overachiever. I got involved in voting, so I had to go get the 100-ton license.
That was where the bar was?
Yeah, it seemed like what you did. If you're going to do it, you do it right. As a yacht broker, I was one of the top 10 salespeople in the country for Carver Yachts.
Oh, really?
It was interesting at that time. I was probably one of the only women selling boats.
Not surprised.
And I can remember going to their National Dealers Conference and getting an award as the second or third top salesperson, and I was literally the only woman there. And so, you know, again, it's kind of that overachiever status.
Yeah, yeah, but it drives you.
It drives you, but it also is something, I go back to my dad and I give him an incredible amount of credit for who I am today. He always basically told us, "Do whatever you want." He said, "If you're going to be happy living in a cave by yourself, that's what I want you to do. You can do whatever you want." And so I never felt like there was any constraint placed on me by virtue of being a woman. It just never occurred to me. It was like, why shouldn't I do it?
Yeah.
And I was brought up that way, which was wonderful.
But why was the pull to, what was the pull to law?
My dad was an attorney. My grandfather was an attorney. My great-grandfather was an attorney.
Okay.
It was just something that seemed the right thing to do.
I see.
It was something that had always, I'd been working in my dad's office since I was in junior high school.
Oh.
Back long before they had computers, when settlement statements for real estate transactions were done manually. So he would bring me in in the evening and pay me to tally up numbers on yellow sheets because he needed extra help at certain times of the month.
Where's child labor laws when we want them, right?
Yes, yes. And I remember one summer, he had me doing it when I was in college, and at the time I wanted a Quizinar. And so at the end of the summer, he bought me a Quizinar.
Oh, there you go.
That's how I got paid.
Comp, comp.
I was thrilled. I still have that today.
Oh, is that right?
I still have the same one today.
That's incredible.
And I think of him every time I use it.
Oh, that's very cool.
There.
So there's a big difference between caring for a community and actually signing up and saying, "I'm going to be actively involved." And I know that this is your second election.
This will be my second election, yes. I'm ending my first term.
And so, I'm sure you had moments where you said, "Maybe I don't want to do this anymore."
Absolutely.
But was the motivation for, I mean, was there a particular issue? I'm trying to remember what was on the table then, but we had just gone through a Talbot Boys conversation. We had dealt with comp plan issues.
We've done, we've done all that in the past four years while I've been on the council. That's all been part of my experience. But I think the thing that brings me back is helping people. And it really is the people that you, I feel that I've been able to assist over the past four years that is so gratifying. And it's individuals. It's not necessarily big things. It's small things.
Yeah.
A couple of examples, soon after I was elected, I learned about a gentleman who was trying to open a business in Talbot County. And he was having all sorts of difficulties with the Department of Transportation. It was on a state highway. And some of the requirements they were putting on him were simply excessive and he couldn't deal with it. It was about the same time that the lieutenant governor had a commission looking at regulations and how they affected businesses. I was able to contact that group, talk to them on behalf of this gentleman. They immediately got me in touch with the State Highway Administration, who immediately reached out to this fellow and made the accommodations he needed. He never even talked to me. I just heard about it. He contacted me later. He said, "I can't believe you did that for me and you didn't even know me."
Yeah, that's crazy.
I had a woman who's a school bus driver for Talbot County Schools. I was talking to her and she was complaining about how it really scared her, how many people run the buses. She says, "I'm sitting there letting kids off." She said, "I've had them run on the side, on the right, in the breakdown lane where the kids are getting out." And I said, "That's crazy." So I contacted Sherick Campbell. He immediately assigned a deputy to her. They found grant money to work on school bus safety. He assigned a deputy to actually ride with her, follow her. And they were able to issue a number of citations to people. She is, her appreciation makes me feel so good because she said, "I never thought anybody really cared."
Well, what do they call it? They call it psychic income. And it is important because when you face tough decisions, I'm sure, you know, this tests you.
There.
And that Talbot Council has been tested over the last six months.
It has been tested over the last four years, I would say.
Well, yeah, fair enough.
We've had a lot of different issues that have been challenging.
But nothing more contentious than, you know, the comp plan and...
The zoning that we've just gone through.
Zoning, and I am surprised by the, you know, I make sure that people aren't mean, but they can be frank and tough on public officials. And I've never seen this kind of, for a long time, this kind of climate in our comments section.
No, I haven't.
On these issues. And I would like to back up and just kind of frame where, what your general thoughts were in terms of, for example, water and sewer, particularly in the Bay 100. And how we got to this spot and how do we move beyond it?
The water and sewer, well, we don't have water. We don't have any county water. So it's basically sewer. I'm a firm believer that the more houses we can put on sewer, the better our bays, the better our rivers, the better our creeks are going to be. I don't think, I know that sewer does not equate growth. There is a lot of false information out there. There have been a lot of misinformation that basically says, "Oh, my gosh, if you run a sewer line, you're going to have growth." The laws of the state of Maryland have been very solid on that issue for 50 years, where they have said very, very clearly that any improvement to sewer in and of itself does not warrant rezoning property. You've got to have a major change to the character of the community. And sewer, just the fact that it's running down a street doesn't create that change.
So why the anxiety? Why the kind of harsh protests that I've been mentioning before?
I think a lot of it's politically motivated. I think it's a matter of a political group that wants to advance certain people over others, perhaps. I think it's a number of people who have been sadly misled to believe and been told that sewer can equate to growth, when in reality, our laws for the state are very strong on that subject.
So let's take Whitman, for example, all right? So they get the sewer line in there. Anxiety is that there will pop up additional housing. What are the protections for a hamlet like that to make sure that they have some stake in their future?
Well, the protection is essentially Maryland law. It says you can't take a parcel and rezone it into multiple parcels strictly because you have a sewer there. An existing lot of record is a different story if it's in a sewer service area. I mean, an existing lot of record in a sewer service area would be entitled to connect, but you couldn't take that 10-acre parcel and now create five 2-acre lots. Maryland law simply does not prohibit or does prohibit that.
So when you say that to some of these advocates against these things, does that obviously doesn't satisfy them, right?
No, no, because they've been told otherwise. They've been told otherwise, and they'll come back to me and say, "Oh, no, you're just lying to us because you want to get what you want. This is going to profit you.
Right, yeah.
You're lying to us."
Yeah.
And I mean, I've returned emails. I've answered emails with quotes from the Court of Appeals directly saying, "This is what the law is." And they come back and say, "Oh, no, no, no. No, we've been told otherwise." So that's frustrating to me.
Yeah, well, what's interesting to me is that, as I understand it, I mean, some of these people are bona fide conservationists.
Exactly.
These are people who believe in ecosystem protection and so...
As do I, which is why I want to see houses taken off failing septics.
Yeah, and it seems to get lost in the conversation a lot.
Yeah, it does.
I don't think any group, has any group opposed, conservation group opposed these changes?
When you say these changes, could you...
I mean, the expansion of sewer.
Sewer. They don't specifically oppose the expansion of sewer, but they're really focused on that we don't want to see any increase in development. And again, it's pretty clear that Maryland law doesn't allow that to happen.
Yeah.
So I'm not uncomfortable running sewer lines because I know that in and of itself can't allow any kind of rezoning where you would have additional lots provided.
So the net-net for you is that this is helpful for the...
For the environment, absolutely, absolutely. Particularly up our creeks. We have so many of our creeks that don't get the tidal flow to really flush them out. And whether you like it or not, no matter what the age of your septic, eventually some of that material is seeping out into the creeks.
So, you know, as we were talking about psychic income on the positive, I mean, is it hard for you to hear people accuse you and your colleagues of special interests?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, and how do you counter that?
I don't know how you do it. I really don't know the answer to that. I mean, I'm an attorney. I handle a limited number of real estate settlements. I'm not involved in any type of subdivision issues. I've never been involved in that side of real estate law. The only subdivision law I ever got involved with was a gentleman who came to me. He had bought a property in Dorchester County that had been subdivided with the intent to develop it, and he wanted to unsubdivide it and turn it back into a farm. Only one I've ever done. So, and that was long before I was on the council. So it's not an area I get involved with, nor would I. I mean, being on the council, it would be a huge conflict of interest for me to get involved in anything regarding zoning, subdivision, anything of that nature. I mean, there's no way I would even begin to touch it. But I do resales of property. Most of them have been in existence for years. I don't really work on new home subdivision settlements. And that's only a small portion of what I do.
So bad rap?
Bad rap, very bad rap, absolutely. And there's so many good things that we've done as a council. And it's frustrating when people are focusing on misinformation in a very small area instead of looking at all the good stuff that we've accomplished over four years.
So let's get into some of that good stuff. Give me your top three things that you're the most proud of for your term in office.
The top thing I think I'm proud of is the people we've hired, the department heads we've hired. We have got some of the most incredible people working for this county that I have ever in my life met. I mean, they are just, I would put them up against any county in the entire country. People like Warren Edwards, who runs the roads department, they had a major failure of a culvert where they had to dig down 20 feet to repair it. He was on site for 36 hours. Now Warren is a gentleman who's recovering from a hip replacement and a knee replacement that he had because somebody got upset with him trying to stop them from going into a construction zone and ran their pickup truck into Warren, attempting to kill him. And so here's this gentleman recovering 36 hours on that job site. They don't get any better than that.
Yeah.
And his staff and crew see him out there and they work just as hard because they see him there.
Yeah, that's a good story.
Cassandra, who's running tourism and economic development, again, that's, I'm so proud of that department. We put them together. It created a more efficient and a more effective mechanism because they're so similar. I mean, what she and her team have done are fantastic. They held listening sessions in every community in the entire county to hear from people in Trap, in Oxford, in St. Michael's, in Tillman. What do you all need? What do you see? What are your problems? I went to every one of those. I'm the only council person who attended every one of those listening sessions because I wanted to hear it too.
Yeah.
I thought it was really important to me to know what people all throughout the community had to say. As a result of that, they've come up with an incredible strategic plan. They've put together the PACE program, which is the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program that allows businesses to basically finance improvements, physical improvements to the business. It's going to be clean energy, solar panels, insulation, and they can do it by paying it back with their real property taxes. So it's a whole special program that the county is now involved in, that she and her team put together. They've worked on creating the enterprise zone in Tillman and in Easton for tax benefits for people who come into those areas and invest money to create businesses and hire people. I mean, sort of the list goes on and on what they've done.
Yeah. And how about the council itself? Is there one act or one law or one regulation that you feel like this was the right thing to do and...
Hmm, I don't think there's one act or one bill or one law. I think it's more the management of the county as a whole that I'm proud of. I mean, my philosophy is you hire really good people and you let them do their jobs and they will make you look good. And I think that's what we've done.
So one thing that they can't do is approve a school budget.
Correct.
And that goes onto your desk. I know we have a school board, but this is going on throughout the state.
Yes.
We have this mandatory maintenance of effort. In many cases, it's not enough to fulfill a full budget. I was there at the Republican Forum primary where this was discussed, and it was so good, I don't know if you knew this, but I rebroadcast this in Kent County on the Chestertown Spie.
Okay.
And so you've got a lot of hero, I mean, a lot of fans in Kent County because this was, we're going to stick with our school system. Could you talk about that a little bit?
The maintenance of effort formula that the state has really penalizes Talbot County. It penalizes it because it looks at the total value of real property in the county, total value of personal property, and then it looks at the number of students. And the formula, if you've ever read it, is incredibly convoluted, just incredibly convoluted. But essentially, because we have a great deal of valuable waterfront property and our school population is not huge, we are seen to be what they consider a wealthy county and therefore the state contribution per student in the county is very, very low compared to other counties in the state. What the county puts in per student is one of the top in the state. But it's the fact that we get so very little from the state that means our per pupil funding is lower than most counties. It's not the county, it's the state that creates that dilemma.
So you're familiar with the Kerwin Commission?
I am, I am.
And supportive of their recommendations?
Philosophically, I'm supportive of their recommendations. Practically speaking, I am at a loss to see how they come to fruition. And I think that's so often the case in government, is you've got something that you would like to see, but how do you afford it? And that's a constant conflict in government. And I think a lot of the things Kerwin has said, especially in his preliminary report, is that US schools are not great on the international scale. Maryland schools are not great on the countrywide scale, and we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, yeah.
But trying to find the money to do it is going to be a problem.
But you see, once every year, you all will kind of continue to support it. Is that your commitment?
Absolutely, absolutely. One of the things, and I talked about it a little bit during the budget hearings, is that, and as you and I were talking a little while ago about schools and looking back in history in our own lifetimes, the schools today, the students today are not students of yesterday. Those, so many students today coming into kindergarten unfortunately have grown up without a parent in the home. They've grown up perhaps without parents who were able to read to them at night because mom and/or dad are working two jobs to make ends meet, because there's so many conflicting demands on those parents' times. So we have kids coming into our schools who really haven't had the opportunity and socialization that children of 25, 30, 40 years ago had. And I think we really have to be sensitive to that. And we have to be willing to try to help those children get a leg up so that they, in that kindergarten and first grade, are now equal as far as the opportunities they have to the children who perhaps had the benefit of going to nursery school from second and third, you know, two years old and three years old. And that's a real conundrum, is how do you do that?
Yeah.
How do you do that? I mean, society has changed, whether we like it or not, it has changed. And we have children who have lots of benefits from the time they're born, and we have a lot of children who don't. And unless we, as a society, step up and try to say, "These children need more help. We really need to help them." Because otherwise, when these children who are at three and four years old don't have the same opportunities, if you don't get them then, by the time they're 10 or 12 years old, you're not going to get them. You're not going to get them. You have to get them when they're young.
So how do you assess the Talbot County school system now? I mean, talking about return on investment or whatever you'd like to say, but...
I think they're doing a great job with what they have. I think they try very hard. I have toured many of the schools and the teachers are so engaged in what they do. They are so focused on those children. I think for the most part, our school board and our school system, our school employees, from the superintendent down to all the support staff, they really care about the children. They really care about the children. And you see it, you feel it. I know when I walk through a school system with Dr. Griffith and the kids come up and give her hugs, and she knows everyone's name. And not only does she know their name, she'll say, "Susie, how are you? How's your brother Johnny?" It's like, wow, wow.
Well, and also, you know, as we go through this school crisis or budget crisis, again, back to Kent County a little, they've lost 38 students this year. You can do the math. I mean, that's $500,000.
That's a lot of funding.
And so you see this thing out of Tillman where the elementary school was on the chopping block.
Right.
And the community said, "Not only are we don't want it, but, you know, we're going to use marketing and we're going to, you know, get a grassroots program together." And what, they brought up, they brought like 40 new students.
There are, I think, 100, 101, something like that?
From 63, yeah, something like that, amazing.
Which shows what people can do when they, when they get engaged in a positive manner.
Yeah.
In a positive manner.
Yeah. Well, segueing to a different subject, it is the 200th anniversary of Frederick Douglass. This is a very important thing for Talbot County, but it's also kind of a moment to reflect on our diversity and some of the challenges that we go through. We did go through a very, very difficult conversation about the Talbot Boys. And I also get the sense from other communities that this issue is not going to go away anytime soon. So it was kind of, you know, taking care for the immediate future, but not for the long term. Thinking about this bicentennial, where do you think things are in terms of race in our county?
I think they could be better. I really think they could be better. I think the discussions we've had, the groups we've had may have made some impact, but I think we have a long way to go. I really do. I think we have a long way to go.
If push comes to shove and the Talbot Boys thing comes up again, do you have a feeling about it?
I, at this point, I don't. I mean, it's been addressed by this council. I don't know where it will go in the future. I think one of the things we, as a council, would like to see is, is our commissions and our committees and our boards have openings? We'd love to see more diversity on them, but we're not seeing people apply to be a part of them. And that's problematic. We've actually reached out into various minority communities and tried to find candidates that we can appoint, and we're not having a whole lot of luck. And that's problematic.
Yeah.
And it would be, it would be, to me, it would be really, if we're going to improve race relations, if we're going to be a more coordinated community, it would be nice to see members of various groups, various demographics be willing to be involved. And be willing to be involved in a positive way. And I think, to me, that's an important step forward, not just to be negative on something, but to actually step up and say, "Yes, I would like to serve on that committee. I would like my voice heard. I would like to be a part of these decisions." And until you can get people to be willing to do that, it's difficult. And that's a difficult, we've been facing.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a conundrum, as you say. I think what's also kind of interesting, as you know, through the school profile, we're becoming a far more diverse county.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thirty percent of all our kids now are coming from minority families and...
Which is why we'd like to see members of that, those groups be willing to participate in county government.
Yeah.
And we have so many different committees and boards, some of which meet on a regular basis, some of which might only meet once a quarter.
Right.
But it's an opportunity for those groups to start to get more engaged in our community. And I think by doing that, that will improve race relations in our community and be a step forward. Because if you don't, if you're not willing to engage and be part of it, it's very difficult to unite people if you stay separate. And so I really think that would be an important first step.
You know, you're heading into your, actually, the second term. What is the low-hanging fruit that you'd like to take care of in the next term? I mean, are there things that you'd like, are on your list that you didn't get to this time around and you really feel like it would be worth...
Well, one of the disappointments, I think, I've felt, and I know a couple of the other council members have also felt, is that we didn't do more with affordable and workforce housing. There was a group appointed to study it, and that was appointed, that group was actually appointed before I joined the council, but they reported to the present council. And they did a great deal of work and a great deal of research and provided us with a comprehensive study. And unfortunately, we basically took that study and put it on the shelf. And I am as guilty as anybody of not doing more. I think the fact that we have, the comprehensive plan was foremost on our agenda early in our four-year term, and then the zoning code followed right on its heels, it made it difficult to take on another, what could have been a fairly major project.
Right.
I'm hoping that on the next council, I have the opportunity to take that off the shelf, dust it off, and really address some of the issues that they brought to us, perhaps re-engage them briefly because they did so much work for us.
Yeah.
And just say, "Can you, is there any updates you'd like to add to this, but now's the time to really start looking at it?"
Yeah. You know, this has been great. We've covered a lot of subjects, but, you know, I always forget one or two. And I'm wondering if there are things that you're running on or have particular interest in that we haven't covered.
Well, the reason I ran four years ago, and I'd say it's the same reason I'm kind of running today, is that I'd like to see a county that's more efficient and more effective. I think we've made strides in that regard. I think, as I mentioned, combining tourism and economic development was a big step for those two groups. I think creating central booking in the Department of Corrections was a huge step. I think you could talk to any law enforcement person in the county and they will say that is one of the best things that happened in their career. It has been a major difference. Prior to having central booking, when an officer arrested someone, they would have to go and sit with them until a court commissioner was available, which sometimes took six, eight, even 10 hours. By doing that, you're putting a police officer who's not trained... By doing that, you're putting a police officer who's not trained to basically handle a prisoner in that position, and you're taking him off the road from doing what they're trained and want to do.
Yeah.
Now, when they arrest somebody, they take them to central booking, they fill out the paperwork, and they basically turn them over to the Department of Corrections, who has a holding cell where they keep them until the commissioner's available. The, the money that's saving, the efficiency it's providing are tremendous.
And it, and it took a county initiative to...
Yes, yes, it was a county initiative. Another initiative we, we had, the county finance office now collects recidation taxes when a property transfers. Used to be through the state, through the clerk of the court's office. By doing that, we're saving the county $300,000 a year going into the county coffers. Warren, I mentioned Warren Edwards, Roads Department. He came to us and was saying that they had problems with people who did work in county right-ofways along the roads. So he wanted to institute a permitting process where if you're going to work in a county right-ofway, you have to get a permit from the Roads Department. We've fully invested in that. Warren reported back to us the other day that I believe that process, I mean, that there is a fee for a permit, it's not huge, but it has generated $17,000 this year. And he knows who's responsible if damage occurs. So again, it's really effective. And I just am excited about those types of things we've been able to accomplish. And the, the list goes on. The Enterprise Zones, the PACE legislation, the, the Department of Corrections put together what they call a prisoner in, or a reentry program. Where, where prisoners, people who are serving time with the state, they bring them back to the county 30 to 45 days before their release date so they can be involved in a reentry program locally, working with them to find housing, jobs, that sort of thing, rather than just coming out of a state facility and being dumped on the street.
Yeah, that's great.
There are just so many good things that sometimes when I hear the, the negatives, I have to go back and think, "We really have done a lot of great stuff." We, and I wanted to do more, and there are more things we can do.
Just wrapping up, this has been great. I, I guess always the question is, we've got now 10 candidates? I can't remember.
10 candidates.
10 candidates.
Correct.
What are the differentials? What, what do you think that you bring to the table that maybe some others might not have that same skill set?
I think I bring a very diverse background, and I think a diverse background is a good thing. As I said, I, you know, I went to school in Washington DC. I went to the University of Maryland. I worked for a mortgage company as a loan processor. I worked for a hotel in their reservations department. I sold boats while I went to law school. I've taken flying lessons. I've run boats. I was a charter captain and ran boats up and down the East Coast and the Caribbean. You know, I've done a lot of things in my life. I've worn a lot of hats, and I think that lets you really relate to a variety of people that if I hadn't, I wouldn't. I think having a law degree, one of the, and it was funny because a friend of mine who was, went to law school a couple of years before me, said, "Wait till you finish, you will learn a whole new way of thinking." And I didn't know what he meant, but now I do. Going to law school, they really teach you to focus on the issue, not all the, the superficial facts, but what is the real issue in front of us? And I think that's a huge benefit to being on the council. I think the other is I have taken, I, I, after I passed the bar, I was selected to participate in the Maryland State Bar Association Leadership Academy, where they pick 15 young attorneys from across the state, and they have an 18-month comprehensive program. And you really, they bring in incredible speakers, incredible programs, and having been selected to participate in that, number one, I was extremely honored. And number two, having done it, the benefits of something like that are great. After I was elected to the council, I immediately signed up for the University of Maryland Academy for Excellence for Government Officials.
I didn't hear about that either.
Normally, that's a four to six-year program. I completed it in two years. Again, that overachiever status I tend to have, yes. So I literally finished in two years. Because I felt if I'm going to be on the council, it's critical to me to take all these courses to really understand the nuts and bolts of local government.
Yeah.
So I think those are things I bring that are very important to this county.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.